This work session, I'll take care of a couple of things. Really, I don't think we're going, we'll need an hour board, but we'll have it for anything else at the conclusion of this work session. We'll start now. Now, we can begin because Mr. Joe Deaton has walked in the room. So. Ah, doing great. So glad you're here.
Yeah. I'm good, really. I've had some.
Uh-huh. Good.
We might add something to this thing. I'm grown, I know it's possible.
Been there, done that. All right. Gray, thank you for your patience and all this. I did not check that microphone, but you might want to just step up there, that podium, and Chief Robert said he got it ready to go for you. Is that right?
Should be. Let's see. We're a little low. There we go.
All right.
And I can cast. I have the online map if you want me to cast to it.
Um, we can. You'll have to get our IT gentleman in the back to get you to throw over there.
I'm ready.
You're ready?
Give it, give it a few seconds.
Go ahead and do it. Throw it on there if you can.
It's coming on there.
All right. So, those were the changes within it that we went through.
Yes. If it says final or April 7th, then that is what is on that last large map that you have. Yep.
All right. So, this evening, Harry Williams is actually on vacation, so he won't be attending tonight. He's probably in Arkansas looking at us online as dedicated as he is. It's my story, I can tell it. My story, I can tell it. And Dwight and Jared will be along in a few minutes. So, let's go ahead. Now, we began working on this almost seems like two years ago. Feels like it.
It was, yes, sir.
And I'm not overly anxious to put it past us, but this is a land use plan for the future. This is not zoning. We're very clear over and over and over about that. And this leads us to discussions of zoning once we get this behind us. So, if you wanted to read the technicalities of state law, you would say that we're not in compliance state law because we haven't done this within five years. That's not, not that uncommon, though, but we've been working at it for a couple of years, so I guess that means that we're in compliant.
We are absolutely compliant with the law. There's no five-year requirement. But the Dollar General is compliant.
That is correct.
Especially for zoning, which you need to go through this before you can discuss zoning.
That is correct.
Which is a constant thing for us as we're growing. So, Gray, Board, they're here. You might have questions for you. Got a couple of people in the audience. And we've got extra chairs up here. You saw us running around getting chairs because Venture City is coming tonight, which is another important thing for the community. We've got two mayors and all Board members, and we like to include the elementary students in what we do. All right. So, do we want to start going down the line? Do you have any prepared comments that you would like to allude to? Could you go down a list just for whoever might be listening for the first time as to those changes that we've made in this visionary land use plan 20 years from now?
Well, I'm going to back up and start from the beginning, just in case we have new interest.
Good.
Um, we are looking at the city's proposed comprehensive plan, which includes the land use plan. It looks similar to zoning, but it is not zoning. It is what becomes the foundation for future zoning changes, but it is not zoning. So, what we're studying is a 20 to 25-year plan of where the city feels its growth and development will occur, making sure that is orderly, making sure there is proper infrastructure, transportation, everything that is needed to accommodate this growth going into the future.
Great.
It is required by state code?
Just wanted to interrupt you, and I apologize for that. But just in case there's someone out there in the world listening for the first time, I'd like you to introduce yourself. We all know you, but, you know, and your credentials as a city planner to help municipalities work through this, or counties, any local government to work through this.
Okay.
So, if you could, just give us your pedigree and who you work with and that kind of thing.
Absolutely. So, Gray Oates with Central Mississippi Planning and Development. I am an AICP certified planner, which is the National Association, highest level of, well, one below the highest level. I've not been planning long enough to be a fellow. There are many more years in my career to get to that point, but been doing this work on the planning side for 15, for 10 years now, and have been a resident of Rankin County for 15. So, we are continuing our conversation of this land use plan. It's really where we've spent our time. We have gone through the text of the document, and there are other elements that we may want to address again. Based on input through this public hearing process, we've had three or four, if my dates are adding up right, I think it's, we're on our third or fourth night of public input and opportunity. We have made a few changes from the first draft. Every iteration of this has been republished on the city's website. It's been available for review. So, if you would like for me to, I can walk through those changes.
Please.
Gray.
Yes, sir.
The permitted uses that we're currently working on, is that going to be the same or when we do a new?
When we get to zoning, we will go back through those permitted uses and find as best possible where they match. So, your land use plan is going to be more generic. It's going to be slightly more vague. We're not going to get into the fine details of what use specifically is permitted. You may find examples of a general use. Nomenclature, changing those names and titles, we certainly can get into that when we get into zoning, but they'll typically be a little different. Like your R1 or R8 in your instance would fall under a low-density category in the land use plan. So, the changes that we have made since the first draft was published, Highway 471 at Warner Drive, that is now a general commercial, or excuse me, a community commercial. I apologize. I need to get my, my name's correct. On the southwest corner of that intersection, East Mark Drive, made a revision there where it is now light industrial, similar to the surrounding properties. Made this change. US 80 at Exit 59. This one, this interchange known commonly as the East Brandon Interchange has had a couple of different iterations. Where we have landed has taken us to the western side of that interchange, which is between Highway 80 and I-20, is residential estate. To the north of I-20, along US 80, Page McDill, Tricklebridge, and the rail, you have regional commercial and community commercial.
Just to help, just in case someone missed this, if you could walk over to the TV and point to that when you bring it up, just so everybody's got the visual of exactly what you're talking about. So, that is Exit 59 and Highway 80 east. That's right. Right. Yep. Okay. Great. Well, you, I don't, are you on a laptop or an iPad?
It's a laptop or a Surface.
You got a cursor you can run around with?
Like, put it on.
That was, well, that helps a little bit.
I don't know if this one has the hand that I can use.
Okay, that's all right. We're with you.
So, on the northern side, it's regional commercial first, and then as you approach Tricklebridge and the rail, it is the red community commercial. And then the darker gray on the eastern side between the rail and Highway 80 is heavy industrial, which matches the use of that land currently. And given the rail access, the highway access, it, from a planning standpoint, that makes sense. Then if you come back to the south side, between Highway 80 and I-20, in that sandwich, you have in the purple, regional commercial, and immediately adjacent to the interchange is community commercial. On the south side of that, you have more regional commercial, and then the light purple is neighborhood commercial. And that flows into low-density residential development, which is similar to the development pattern in that immediate area. So, this gives you an opportunity for a mixture of three commercial types at a major intersection, a major interchange, that is likely to see growth, given the expansion of Grants Ferry Parkway in the future. Are there questions about that area?
Basically, you have a regional, community, and neighborhood part of the commercial.
Correct. Neighborhood is the least intense of your commercial uses. Regional is the most intense. So, regional, you're thinking box stores, Home Depot, a large grocery store, maybe your auto dealers, your very intense large uses in those areas for commercial. Not talking industrial, just commercial. Being along a US highway and with an interstate interchange in a vacant area with rail, also have major infrastructure in that area. You've got the Entergy substation that exists in that area. And then your general commercial is going to be a little smaller uses, and then your neighborhood will be your smallest commercial uses, more office type, with a small, maybe, coffee shop, cafe, little restaurant, a convenience store without gas stations, without fuel pumps. Okay. Moving on, Highway 18 at 468. Nope, wrong one. This one. So, I'm going to click on it so you can see. It's the highlighted parcel. This specific section that is currently highlighted had residential estate going all the way up basically to the frontage of the neighborhood, of the highway. So, we are making that, just dropping the neighborhood commercial slightly to the south Moving along Highway 18, back up towards the rail and the interstate. Got a couple of different parcels we're going to address here. Okay.
Talk about these and this.
So, these areas have gone through a couple of iterations of changes, but this is ultimately ending with on the north side of Highway 18, medium-density residential in these parcels, the yellow. Beside that is your patio or townhome residential. On the south side of 18, moving back towards the west, you have neighborhood commercial on the front, and then you drop into medium-density residential, and two spots of patio home in that area. This area is what is intended to be a large-scale, master-planned community that may fit in the zoning realm as a PUD where they come in, lay out a large master plan. It has a multitude of uses across this acreage. The uses that would be included in that would be allowed within these land use designations. So, it would be just residential, maybe some light neighborhood commercial.
And as I understand it, you had long conversations and meetings with Edwin Salas concerning that property and?
We did.
They were put at ease about that?
The understanding is that PUD is a zoning term and a zoning classification that could be applied to this property based on a master plan that is submitted to the Board, and it would be designated as a PUD at that time. You don't, you don't want to apply a PUD designation to a land use plan. It's more general in those terms.
Now, I was wondering if those flats, I just thought about how that's kind of, I didn't know if that was a plan.
I think those are just parcel lines that exist.
Those are existing parcel lines. That is the master plan, kind of a draft master plan that has been floated. I would not call it a proposed at this point. I'm going to say it's strictly a draft, kind of a drawing of this is a possible intent. How could we make this fit? Are there other questions about that area?
Can you zoom out or whatever to where Commissioner Andy Gibson, his, that area that he is wanting to develop out there, that farmer's market? And I'm trying to find it. I've got the smaller map out to see what it's, what it's, what we have there or what we should look at that.
I believe, if I am not mistaken, it is this purple.
Correct.
Parcel. That is technical industrial, which is going to fit. That use will fit in that area because there might be some research activities. It's going to have a lot of outdoor being a market and a, I think there was some, not museum-type, but like assistance to small farmers and that sort of thing possibly to be there. So, this would fit in that area. All right. So, we're going to move on. Old Highway 471. This area was a mixture of commercial as it has developed. As it stands today, it's really more of a light industrial area. All of those uses fit that designation, especially given the location with the rail being on kind of a side street to the, to the highway. Again, it's a light industrial, so it's going to be enclosed. It's not going to be major plant manufacturing activities in that area, but it's, could accommodate a service station, your landscape yard. Those, those uses that are there, the rental facility, those, the uses that are there today fit the light industrial classification. Then we have Old Brandon at Crossgates Boulevard. It is this parcel in particular, the orange parcel. It's the existing apartment complex. That was in our first draft shown as general commercial, and that has been returned to multifamily, high-density.
Are you sure? I'm just kidding.
Not funny.
I would just be ready to chat.
Not funny. Cheap seats in the back.
Highway 80 at Edgewood Crossing, which is Highway 80 at the Cannon Ridge. We're going to start here. The first draft of this showed it is neighborhood commercial, which would be fitting with the existing development there, is a convenience store, a smaller retail convenience store. We revised that to include the existing gas station on the north side of Highway 80 as neighborhood commercial as well. It has since been returned to general commercial or community commercial.
So, Gray, that's, that's both of those red to the south?
Yes. It's, it's actually three parcels.
Community commercial. They were neighborhood commercial?
That was the draft of the land use plan. The first draft that was presented had it shown as neighborhood commercial, in keeping with that existing retail front that's there. It could fit in the neighborhood commercial designation.
So, is that the far west parcel? Is that the Dollar General?
I can't say exactly which one it is. I can turn on the aerial. It's one of those three. I believe it is the far west, but it, it may be the...
Is it like, where would it, not general?
Dollar General could fall in the neighborhood commercial. It's just under your, under a size that you would typically say could be in a neighborhood. It would be one of the larger neighborhood retail establishments. It's definitely a service to that neighborhood and to, to that general area. So, I would suggest that's where I would classify it. Some may classify it in a community commercial, but it would be on the small side of that.
Well, you've got that, and you've got the one down further that's by...
Yes. That's the, so the next one?
I know, I've had calls about that one.
Okay. Glenwick, four. So, originally, the first draft of this had both this front parcel that is currently red, and then the new homes that form the rest of this triangle where you see 119 through, I believe, 133, possibly 135. Those were shown as neighborhood commercial. Those have since been developed. So, we're showing the kind of peach color for the residential, which is your patio home residential, which is the development that is there. The parcel on the corner, again, was first shown as neighborhood commercial. It has since been returned to community commercial. So, those are the changes that we have made since the first draft was published. Are there other general questions, explanations, concerns with the document that you would like for us to address? I'm happy to do so.
I have a question.
Okay.
And then one is that, on West Sunset, that, that, okay, this one's right, you just zoomed out. It's the old roadblock apartments that will just condemn the, the model.
All right.
All right.
So, one more time, which ones are we?
Right, just the parcel north of that, only...
That one? Okay.
So, we just condemn that and demolish that complex.
Okay.
Rather than starting to cycle all over, you know, we changed the parcel, that's two of them, and the one on West Sunset and Overby to be medium-density. I just, I would like to see that changed to medium-density. The plan is to be building that property back, just do administrative zoning on that. So, yeah, that probably would be to reflect single-family residential, and some of the facts of medium and whatever board is proposing.
I think in that area, medium-density would be suitable. It's the same as surrounding properties.
It would be the same on the east side of it and across the street, so.
Mm-hmm.
Be common, all the way down to Morrow Drive, which is the subdivision you see down there on the left side of that. So, it'd be continuous with that.
Yes.
And Berry Drive is just across the street, which is those three buildings you see by themselves. That's just Berry. Remember, right? Okay.
Okay.
All right. So, there's one. Where was the other one?
The other one was where, Overby, that is in the West Sunset.
Okay.
The duplexes, right, the two parcels right behind that, on West Sunset. There are people building new houses on West Sunset right now, water.
Okay.
And, I mean, anything, that's going to be localized, or, or, and, and change it to, to, more than that.
Yeah, and you can't really see it without the topo on it, but there's that large drainage ditch that comes from downtown all the way through that. So, it's really not quite as much property as it looks like, but it, now's the time to do that as well.
Is that reflective of the existing use or is that a proposed future?
This is reflective of a future use based on the previous land use plan.
That's a good guess, because I think that is going to compare. As long as it's not affecting impact in the current use.
Yeah.
That's nothing, it's wooded, nothing on it, except for ditch going through it.
Exactly. I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a...
So, which of these parcels specifically?
31927, 31927.
Okay. And then the...
That's my opinion.
Okay. The ones fronting on Overby leave as high-density, or should we make those more of a patio home residential?
What's the existing duplexes?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we want to grab, I mean, we want to create a situation where you recommend it. They're already built out, aren't they?
Yes.
Whatever exists with that buildout.
I would leave it as, as the, now, understanding, this being land use, we could make that change so that if in the future, such as the other complex...
The woods, it would affect the zoning anyway.
Right. Correct. So, we could go ahead and show that and...
As a medium-density, and just make the conversation of that when we go to the rezonance that we don't capture it as well.
Correct. So, we don't make them non-conforming, but...
Do you understand, Chris? See what I'm saying? So, you turn the whole thing into the same medium-density?
Okay. And I would suggest on that side of Overby, because of the surrounding properties, I would make that a low-density instead of the medium-density.
Agreed. There's enough room where you might get one home in there on that larger parcel. Like I said, if you had aerial view, look down at it, you'd see how cut up it is with a large drainage ditch.
So, if the board's inclined to adopt this tonight, they could do it with the changes in the, in the, in the, and we're okay with an order of the Board, so I don't see the statute required to give up by order.
I don't.
If it is a board order, it's, it's inclined to follow.
So, is this the time that we make changes or do we wait?
Well, she's doing that now. These are the changes. This is what we're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to go back, whenever Chris is going to go back to that red over there on Highway 80, especially there by Glenwick.
Okay.
I guess I'm trying to understand why the, that there by Dollar General, because right now, it's neighborhood commercial in there currently.
The city's current zoning, I believe, has it as community commercial.
Oh, okay. It does have it currently as community commercial. Okay, I guess I misunderstood you.
So, if we made a change today to this land use plan, it would not impact that current zoning?
Okay. But currently, the Dollar General there is, it fits more into a neighborhood commercial from what you and I had talked about, about the size and, and all of that, because that is a neighborhood area.
Right.
You know, I don't think we want a Walmart there or a Kroger or a Rainies. I think that we're looking at more, as you said, down by the Page McDill, Tricklebridge, down that area is what we're looking for. Am I, is that correct?
That, that from a planning... That, that, from a planning perspective, yes, is correct.
Well, I'd like, especially that in front of Glenwick, I'd like to see it go to neighborhood commercial. It's not a big piece of land anyway, but I've talked to people, I've gotten phone calls from that area.
So, I think I wanted to something, with community commercial, convenience stores, meaning grocery stores, drive-throughs, farmer's market, motor vehicles for sale, I mean, there's some of those things that are a little bit too commercial, I think.
For a residential area.
Because it's come back up to those houses on...
Mm-hmm. Susan Drive?
Well, Susan's been on the, the new April.
Yes, on that side of the road, you're correct.
I mean, I drive through a restaurant, I don't want my dollars in my back door. Of course, let's just back up now, but this is, this is land use. It's already done in CC. Whenever leases are legal in CC, all the, the property's going to be, unless you rezone your property.
Right.
And that's not the law. That's just, I'm just understanding, that's a, this is a land use, this is a future land use.
Twenty, twenty-five years.
Future land use, yes.
Future land use, that, that when you rezone, you're supposed to rezone consistent with it, so it gives you an idea of the things you want to do. But you still have to effectively rezone the property.
Okay, well, let's look at a scenario again. Let's say we leave it like it is, a community commercial, okay? If somebody wants to come in and put two fast food restaurants in there that somebody can drive through, that falls into that, correct? Okay? What about the neighborhood commercial? Would that fall into that if we changed it to neighborhood commercial?
I don't know that.
From what, you already told me earlier, it does not. And, and I think that gives us more assistance when we're...
Yeah, but what I'm trying to tell you is that, that won't happen with this document. This is a land use plan, it is not a zoning order.
So they would still be...
We just contracted him to... Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, if you come back and want to rezone the property, yeah. I mean, that's the next step in the whole process.
And that next step on individual parcels could be when you adopt a new zoning, or it could be 20 years in the future, just to when that change occurs.
So like according to this, those two corners, the community commercial, restaurant with drive-through is permitted, but the neighborhood commercial without is permitted in that.
Without a...
If you have Domino's, something like that, and strip mall, that would work.
But if it doesn't have a drive-through, then it wouldn't be allowed in a neighborhood commercial. But this is just setting that stage.
I'm going to go back and check the amendments, because I think we addressed in drive-through issues, regarding calls, something in the back of my mind tells me that there was a potential revision with regard to the drive-through issue.
It was. It was versus ordering through a drive-through or pickup, going through and picking up something.
So I don't, I don't know how it pertains, but I do remember you did something, and I don't think it came up, or I don't think it made it to mind.
Okay, dope. All right. Think that'll do it for right now.
All right.
Thank you.
I guess the question is, and we're not voting right now, but is the consensus that you're asking that the comprehensive plan be presented with the changes as presented by Gray and as discussed by Alden Vincent and Alden Moore? Because I think those are the two that proposed any conditional changes. So just make sure when you come back out, when you change something, make sure, and then that Gray expressed with regard to the changes, and those changes that were expressed in the board figures, and in the work session, be incorporated into the final draft to be adopted by the board, okay?
Joe, your head's all wrinkled up, and I need to get to something else, but you want, you got...
I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out whether the proposal on the table is to change the land use for the bowling properties from its current community commercial to neighborhood commercial, because we like it just like it is. And understand that this board's got to approve anything we propose to put there anyway. So, we, we're satisfied with it as community commercial, which is what it's been for a good long time, and that's the way we'd like to keep it. I just want to make sure that change is not what I heard discussed.
I thought that's what you heard.
I thought that's what I heard. Now, and we object to that now, we, we want it to stay like it is.
We got that. There's very few things, though, very few differences between neighborhood, community, and commercial. And most of them are bar, nightclub, automobile sales.
I mean, what, what the general plan is for this is mixed residential commercial. Commercial on the bottom, residential apartments or something like that at the top, condos or something. That's why we want to stay community commercial, because we think that's what that fits.
If, if the idea is a mixed vertical development, I would recommend the category vertical mixed use, which is the blue, which is what a lot of downtown is.
Again, this is supposition, so I'm thinking everything that just came out of Joe's mouth was supposition too, you know, down the road. So I'm just saying, you know, you, you, you're talking about a potential land use plan, you're not talking about zoning. And even though it is on a map as potential land use 20 years from now, you can still change the zoning. Only got, after, make application and change it.
Well, with the right standards, we better get on the right track. And also, how specific is this land use? Like, you, you're not calling it NC or CC, right? You're calling this...
That's the nomenclature that is used in this land use to differentiate the intensities of the commercial development. So you have four commercials?
What, so you're using the same nomenclature as using the other one?
For the, for the commercial section of the land use, yes. It is the same.
So those things, you just use medium, low, uh...
Right. You typically don't have subcategories or multiple districts within, with commercial within a category that you do with the residential.
See, that, that, I was going to ask, you don't have those subcategories in the commercial?
Yes.
Or you do? I thought, I thought that's what she said you do, but then she just said you don't.
So with, with residential, you typically have one to two zoning districts that fit within a land use category. With commercial, you typically don't. You have almost a direct correlation with some specific uses fluctuating between those.
So, yeah, that's why you're asking her to change it from NC to CC, coming from CC to NC. Is there any undeveloped plan that is multifamily or manufactured home?
That's a good question. Let me look.
I didn't see that.
I, I don't recall, and before I offer an answer, I want to...
Chris, I don't think, I think we caught it in the last zoning, but we need to check that, because I think the last time, the only NH we have is developed NH, mobile home, and, um, I have to double check that. And the only, only, only multifamily as well, with the exception, well, my rosewood...
So let me, you know...
No to manufactured home. There is some high density in this chart, but it includes townhouse and zero lot, which would be your patio home.
Is that a five, four, nine, ten, four?
That's going to be your, off of 18, at West Sunset, this area.
A potential five.
Yeah.
No.
Now, I can, we can update this to have it reflect the breakout between patio and townhouse, which is your zero lot and your townhouse, and true multifamily.
Answer your question? Okay. So it sounds like to me then really is just one gorilla in the room, and that is what you want to do on Highway 80 East beside the Dollar General? Are you looking to change? I mean, you got, we're missing one board member when we get here, but you need to decide, are you trying to change the potential land use of that parcel or not? So that's a decision y'all are going to have to make here in a few minutes. Sure. It's what the public means.
That's your question?
Who, Joe?
Yeah, can you share with us, what are you looking at doing with that land?
Yeah, that's what I, I alluded to earlier. What we intend to try to do at some point is have a mixed residential commercial there with a two-story structure with commercial on the bottom and residential on the top. As we sit here today, we don't have anybody that is quite committed to develop and to furnish the money necessary to develop that. That's what the idea is.
Okay. So you come forward with a great idea like that, they're going to have to come to us anyway to rezone it to allow them to do that.
That's exactly right.
And I appreciate you coming, because that's what a work session is for, for us to talk this out. And I, I appreciate you coming here and entertaining my questions, I really do.
Well, I appreciate y'all asking, but, you know, we'd like, we'd like it to stay like it is, because like the mayor just said, we can't do anything without y'all proving it anyway.
And that's right.
But it makes it a little more marketable for us. We know that, we, nobody's going to approve the car lot right there. And that little parcel that's on the corner there, it's got size parameters that are going to dictate...
Do you own it als, do you have it also?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kayla does.
Okay. We'll just pass it down. Okay. So, I will say, for conversation's sake, you do have a category for vertical mixed use, and if that is the intent...
Well...
Then we could set the stage by making the land use vertical mixed use.
Well, you do that, but then you'd have to go backwards. I don't think this is the time to do that, you know, so personally, board. You know, that's an idea.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that's right. That's a rezone it and talk about the plan.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that was clear, though, that that, that is there.
Okay. Yeah, it's already in...
I've guessed it.
No, yeah.
It has to be rezone.
Yeah.
Let it do that more.
Yeah. Okay, well, then, I mean...
You know what I'm saying?
I, I know what you're saying, there's the property owner right there, though, so you, you can go either way. Question? Okay. All right, I would like to spend just a few minutes on the golf cart ordinance. Chief, you better move plant. Chief Roberts, if you could help him with that, maybe put it up there on that easel. I have five for... Brian, 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 go around on the backside, you can reach those, that's what, no, 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 no. Ah, ah, come, walk up here. Come, walk up. Knock yourself out.
He's a big boy.
All right, and you try, and you try, and you try. Yeah, 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 you try, and you try, and you try. He'll stand there and hold it.
Chris, you've been fighting one of that thing for a long time, huh?
Well, if anybody in the public needs to see it, I'm really surprised Linda's not here. All right, so we're talking about a golf cart ordinance in, in Brandon. And we, again, if you'd have gone around on the backside, you wouldn't be having this problem. Yeah, help him out. Tia, help him out. Thank you, Tia. Yeah, yeah, how many, that's right, public safety officials does it take? All right. Okay, chief, you can point. Mr. Baker, you want, you verbally give us the boundaries?
All right, so the boundaries of this, roads that are highlighted in red here are the main territories, state highways, interstate, Highway 80, 468, 711, and the major territories, such as the cross gates, Crossgate Drive, Woodgate Drive, Home Gate, places where traffic, if a golf cart's driving, it's off-lane, it's traffic. Pretty much everything else on here, speed limits are less than somebody with less, so golf carts would not detract so much from the streets that are highlighted in red.
So you're saying that map represents no golf carts on anything that's red or orange, and golf carts would be allowed on everything that's blue?
Correct, yes, sir.
Is that right? Okay. Mr. Baker?
So when we were asked to look at this, when I was asked to look at this, I, I prepared it based on what I thought were kind of your interest with regard to this. What, what does this not allow? This does not allow, uh, it, side-by-side, Polaris's, what are, what are generally called low-speed vehicles? Vehicles that have a top speed greater than 20, but less than 25, 30, whatever, but greater than 20. It, it only apply, it would only apply to golf carts. I mean, you could bring in low-speed vehicles, but then you have to restrict the, the speed on those as well. So, no Polaris, Can-Am Mavericks, Arctic Cats, Big Horns, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is golf carts only, and it's golf carts that are, that are, that are, that have all the equipment, that have all the mirrors and the seat belts and all the safety equipment that is necessary, um, under the stat, uh, uh, under the, the inspection requirements or whatever it is, the, but it's got, you got to have a seat belt, parking brake, headlights, taillights, brake lights, front and rear turn signals, windshield, side and rear reflectors, horn, and an interior rearview mirror. You have to have a vehicle identification number. Actually, for a slow vehicle, you're supposed to also have that triangle that I don't have on here, but it's part of the CFR, so we'll need to list that. And then there's a process whereby you would buy an inspection sticker, the chief would, or the department would inspect it. There's a registration form, insurance requirements, they have to have the minimum liability insurance, but also this one includes a requirement that they carry uninsured motors coverage, minimum uninsured motors coverage is to, to cover that. We, we put that in there, if that's not something you're interested in, we can take that out. But the law does require minimally that they're, that they have, that they meet the financial responsibility requirements. Effectively, no highways, no interstates, no roads over 35. And only thing you can do with regard to a state highway is cross it in order to continue on your travel, but there has to be, well, you see the ordinance, it speaks about that. Well, it's no, no speed, no road that the speed limit, posted speed limits in excess of 30 miles an hour, so that would keep you off of pretty much all trunk roads. This is pretty much subdivision roads only, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess you could find your way to downtown Brandon, right? Could you? Yeah, no, and then we'd have to figure out crossings for Highway 80 or something like that. Um, let's see, what else? Drivers have to be of age, licensed, all that stuff. FYI, the, and we're really going to be very particular about the police department looking at insurance, because I think most people think that these vehicles are covered by their homeowner's insurance, but let me tell you, they are not. And I had a case like this one time, a terrible, terrible tragic case, where a, a child was killed on a golf cart, and everybody thought there was coverage, and there was no coverage. And so this is, you know, you got to get a rider, you got to get a specific policy, and we've got to definitely make sure that everybody who's looking at it knows what they're looking for, because it's that serious. And then we have a disclaimer that says, look, the city, we're not involved in this, this was a desire, if you want to do it, fine, but if something happens, sorry, we just gave you the opportunity, we didn't tell you you had to do it. That's it. Three-wheelers would not be allowed, no sir.
No scooters, no full wheelers.
I'm sorry, Chris.
No scooters, no full wheelers.
I don't know what a scooter, what do you mean?
Yeah, you know, it's a, it's a larger than a mini bike. Remember a mini bike?
Well, this doesn't deal with two-wheel vehicles, this deals with golf carts only. Honda Pioneers, Polaris, and these are just... Honda Pioneers, Polaris, and these are just examples. People come up with stuff all the time, Can-Am, Maverick, Arctic Cat, et cetera, et cetera, or any similar ATV or UT vehicle is not authorized by this ordinance. Well, it's drafted.
Golf cart has to be street legal, headlights.
Effectively, yes.
Mark, it says the registration's there, I may have just missed it.
I think we, I think, I think what we did was an amount, in a fee schedule that you haven't done yet, and so I was waiting for y'all to kinda tell me. I think I had a registration form that had something on there about that. Other cities are kinda all over the place, but nothing really crazy, like fifty, hundred bucks, something like that, just enough to kinda keep up with it. I can't remember what Ocean Springs, they have theirs in there, I don't know if Hattiesburg had theirs in there or not. Uh, Hattiesburg, excuse me, Bay St. Louis was fifty dollars annually. Some cities just have a one-time fee, you know, it's just whatever y'all wanna do. Well, I mean, you have to be a street, you have to be able to be a licensed driver.
And if Mark, I guess, voted on, all this information will be on the website, right?
It would have to be, because you'd have to have a map you're gonna be directing them to, which is pretty self-explanatory. I mean, you kinda know, I mean, you don't have to memorize it, you know where you can't go, but there'll be a map, there'll be a, there'll be, I would assume, some kind of a bullet sheet we give the people that register, there'll be a, you know, just various stuff that people can use to make sure they know what they're, they're doing and stuff like that.
All right. Any other questions, Board? I'm sorry? Well, it does. Mr. Baker?
It's in there. Well, okay, give me a minute. I thought it, I mean, it's not in there.
I give you two minutes.
Well, I mean.
So, you can get auto insurance for a golf cart?
Not auto insurance.
Specialty policy.
Specialty policy. Yep, valid driver's license. And proof of drivers, and proof of financial responsibility. I don't think, I don't know, you're not compelled to tag a golf cart, I don't believe. Well, there's an inspection sticker that we're gonna come up with, but it's not a car tag per se. The statute says inspection sticker, it even goes to the point of telling you where on the back you're supposed to put it, so that's the language in the bill, in the, in the ordinance.
All right. It is five fifty-nine. We will begin our board meeting at six. You can take that down, take it apart, whatever, put it out in the hallway, just go ahead and get out there, somebody might wanna look at it as they leave. Yeah, just go put it in the hallway.
Don't forget, if you're inclined to do this tonight, I gotta come up with the, I gotta add the triangle language.
I agree. That's good, Greg, just thought I'd sit right there for right now. All right. Here we come. Who's the mayor? All right, mayor and board member. Let's tell you what, I'm gonna sound off on your names. Where is Owen?
You got about forty people in the hallway.
I know. You got one stack of chairs back there you can let out? No, not, uh, not yet. I need an update on, update on that one. Ms. Mavis, you getting everybody in here? Just line them up, just line them up right here, one through six. There we go. Is he number one? I didn't follow that, that's okay. If you would, get them lined up. Okay. Parents, y'all come on in, got some chairs in the back, back there. Front row, that's where you need to be, anyway. I got you. All right, Ms. Mavis? Ms. Ma, Ms. Mavis? Hello, Donna? 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 Anybody that comes in can line up on that wall over here. All right, we need to get started, it's after six. Then ask them to walk over here. All right. We need a chair by the city clerk, Brian, there's one empty chair, I see underneath the TV over there, if you can get it over here. Uh, timeout, Carly, Carly? You can take this chair, Sam's not gonna be here. Just take that chair to her. Brian? All right. Start yelling and take over. All right, audience, we have, we're blessed this evening to have some young folks here that are gonna lead us and participate in the board meeting tonight. Ms. Donna, if you would, just raise your hand, wave at everybody, I'm sure someone on this camera can see you. All right, but this is Venture City. Hello, Ms. Valerie, in the back of the room. So, this evening, they participate as board members and the mayor, and they're gonna lead us in prayer and the pledge tonight. So, Mr. Baker, we have Mr. Owen Dragon that's gonna lead us in prayer, is that correct? And Shelby first is gonna lead us in the pledge, no, who's gonna lead us in the pledge? Alex, got it? All right. Okay, so you're gonna lead us in prayer first. If you would, just stick your finger up there and bump that microphone. Not on. Let's make sure it's on, I want everybody in the room to hear you. There we go, Donna, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here this evening. If you would, lead us in prayer tonight, please.
In the name of Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, dear heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight with our city leaders and friends. God, we pray that you give our city, state, and national leaders guidance to carry out your will. God bless the United States and our troops, in the name of your Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen. Turn it over. And who are you?
Alex Melonowski.
Come on up close to that microphone, sound off.
Alex Melonowski.
And you're going to do what?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, if you would, the floor is yours. Oh, my flag is gone. All right, we've had somebody splice a flag, and we're gonna go get it. We're gonna get the fire chief to go get it for us. They, they, there's a graduation going on across the hall, just go get it. We're gonna take pause until we get our flag in there.
Take pause?
No, I don't want that flag on here. I don't want a cell phone flag up here. Hello, Mr. Walter Reed, how you doing this evening? For those of you that came in the room late, we had a work session in here earlier since five o'clock, working through land use plan, and very much appreciate the comments that we worked through as a prelude to our new comprehensive plan. So, we'll begin evaluating zoning throughout the city once that is complete, and right behind that was a discussion about the beginning to use legalized golf carts throughout the city, on what certain streets. I think right there on the floor is fine, right there. And you can, after we finish the pledge, you can put it up top up here. All right. Sorry for the interruption, floor is yours.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Chief, if you would, put that flag up. All right, we're gonna go, Ms. Mavis. You wanna introduce all these to be, you wanna do that? We wanna start with, they can come around up here and come to the very end down here. Who is, Alderman, six? All right, Kinsley, come on by. Mary Oliver Smith, number two.
G.G. Gonzalez is Ward four. Maddie Apple is Ward three. Jackson Kinsey is Ward two. Johnny Owens is Ward one, and the mayors of Philadelphia.
Ah, yeah. All right. Here we go, Mr. Baker, there, all the names. Later. Come on around, here we go. Now, we're gonna have speaking arguments. There we go. Come on in here. How are you, Seagull? Glad to hear. How are you, Seagull? All right. We're gonna do it like this. Now, what I'm gonna do is turn. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Here we go, beginning our board meeting for this evening on May the fifth of twenty-five, five-five-twenty-five. Thank you for that great invocation and the pledge. We always like to open it up at this time for public comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to make public comment before the board? All right, seeing none, we will begin to work on through the agenda. We need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Approve the regular board, board meeting minutes of April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Need a motion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, light sign. Thank you, Board. Recognize the week of May fourth, ten, ten twenty-five, as the fifty-sixth annual professional consumable quirks week. Consideration to adopt the comprehensive plan for the city of Brandon, Mississippi. Consideration to adopt a proposed ordinance for the San, for the city of Brandon to allow the operation of golf, golf carts on certain public roads and streets within the city. Consideration to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Brandon, MS, to include, um, chapter seven regulating, what's that word?
Just go THC.
THC. Consumable, consumable products, and to include section seven through one, regulating the sale of THC beverages. In consideration to amend the ordinance of pertaining of, to chapter six, article one sections, six through nine and six through ten, to the code of ordinances of the city of Brandon, Mississippi. Consideration to, to authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Pickering firm to update the water and sewer master plans.
I think that's excellent, I think he deserves a round of applause.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Shelby and I have a few questions, don't we? All right. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna make sure that when we're adopting the comprehensive plan for the city, the plan as presented includes the amendments by the city's planning expert, Gray Ouch, together with those amendments that were presented in the work session just immediately prior, including the two parcels referenced by Alderman Vincent and the two parcels referenced by Alderman Womack. Clear on that? Were there any other parcels that we needed to just go?
I had three.
Three parcels by Alderman Vincent and two parcels by Alderman Womack. Um, with regard to the golf cart ordinance as presented, because all ordinances have to be reduced to writing, right, Mayor Shelby? Okay. And we need one change to include the requirement of a reflective triangle or reflective tape as required by statute. And then the last thing, um, the article, uh, number six is, we've got that, thank you, that's it. And, yes, thank you. And Mayor, with regard to the adoption of that ordinance of the golf carts, the board needs to set a permit slash inspection fee for that.
All right, is there a discussion about what that fee should be? About, question? All right, let's, let's get pants, so is there a fee that should be charged for?
I've got a question. If we are going to inspect that and make sure that it's street legal, are we going to go out and inspect it, or are they going to come to the police department, have the trailer to the police department?
They're coming to us.
Okay, that makes a difference in time, if you know. We're just doing annual, not an annual, but one time.
It's, it's your call.
Only impact, only, only influence I'd say with that, or only problem would be, it's gonna be manpower sensitive as they come down there, so somebody's gonna have to be there to do that all the time. So, I don't know if one year's okay, two years, three years, but we all have a time limit on our driver's licenses, you gotta get it renewed, so, you know, so I think you do, one year might be a little too tight, but I don't know where, but the dollar value is at now, though. What dollar value should it be, Board?
We gotta buy these inspection stickers, Brent, you have any, excuse me, Chief, you have any idea how much those cost? Brent, you have any, excuse me, Chief, you have any idea how much those cost? Can we, uh? I think on average, I'm finding that it runs about a hundred dollars. You could do, you could do less if you want to, and we can always change it. I mean, it's just a fee schedule that you guys are gonna, that the board's gonna do.
Fifty dollars a year, a hundred dollars for two years. For a two-year time period? Does that sound reasonable? Does that sound reasonable? Fifty dollars, a hundred dollars for a two-year. Sound reasonable? Sound okay with you?
On the comprehensive plan, is the que, is, is a decision been made to approve it with amendment on the parcel we were concerned about?
Well, we're not addressing a comprehensive plan. That's just a future land.
And that, I was gonna bring that up when we got through with this part. I'm gonna bring that back up.
Okay.
That's right, okay. Okay.
Sure. So, as I was going through the items, I got to two, and I said that the proposed adoption of the comp plan was going to include the three parcels, it, all the changes proposed by Gray at the work session, in addition to the three parcels discussed, presented by Chris and the two parcels presented by Sharon Womack.
I wanted to bring that back up because we never really made a decision about what I brought up. It was just kinda thrown out there, but we never, you know, never made a decision on it. And I, you know, I'd like to get y'all's opinion on it. Do you want it to be the, um, commercial, neighborhood? Or the, or the neighborhood? And for those, for those parts there on Highway 80, y'all don't wanna talk about it by Dollar General and nearby Glenwick. So what are y'all's thoughts on that?
I wasn't here, so, and that's what I was gonna ask. Is this something that we have to vote on today?
No, you don't. You can put it off. Uh, this is, we'll go into month four or five on this, though, just trying to get this, if it's that important in certain way, though. You wanna remove it from the agenda?
So if you guys could just give me an update on the three things that were?
Uh, it was the property that was torn down on Jasper Street, the, the, I intend, Gray, you wanna step up here? You might remember those three, Grace. It was on, uh, West, on Sunset.
West Sunset and Overby.
And where was the third one?
And your.
There were two on West Sunset.
There are two on.
Oh, but that ditch cut them in two.
Yes.
That, okay, I call that one.
So.
Really just two locations.
That would be your, um, low density and then the apartments, uh, the property that was demolished off of, um, Jasper.
So wanna change, wanna change that zoning to be consistent with across the street and down on Morrow and O'War down in there, it would all be the same. It would be?
Residential.
Residential.
Yes, sir. Single-family residential.
And what was the third one?
No, there weren't. There were just two locations.
There are multiple parcels, but two general areas within those.
Well, and then Sharon had talked about the, um, the Highway 80.
Right. And then there are a couple of parcels, same thing. There's one at the corner of Shallow Parkway and Highway 80 that was discussed at the end of Glenwick four. And then, um, further down at Edgewood Crossing at the Dollar General, those properties being changed from community commercial to neighborhood commercial. Again, this is land use, which is part of your comprehensive plan, not zoning.
So I would call that Shallow Parkway and Highway 80.
Further to the east.
That's by Glenwick.
That's Shallow Parkway and Highway 80, yes.
I think Gray's got it right.
Delete it, leave it like it is. Yeah, and I'm, I'm good with that because we do have the ability to approve or, I just didn't wanna see a huge, you know, like what's been, being built down there by the COA, a big gas station like that. I just don't want that right there. That, that's my thing. Um, so as long as we have some discretion with that, I'm good with leaving it.
So to recap, the changes by Gray, the three changes by Chris, we're done. Is that right? Is that going to be, that's going to be the, the motion that's going to be part of five, one through six or seven? Okay? Got it. We got a hundred dollars for a two-year license on the golf carts. And, um, that's it for ones through, five, one, two, six.
Are there certain items you can just use the golf cart?
Can you, can, can you just chime in whenever you want?
Tomorrow we had a work session.
It's strictly legal. Licensed driver.
Is there a motion to, to approve those six items? Motion to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign. Thank you, board.
We'll try to do better. So mayors, you're gonna have to speak up. Can you hear me when I'm talking? Okay. Okay, you need to get that microphone closed so that people can hear, please.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Mayor, can I introduce our new city clerk?
Hello. I'm Amelia Hoggett.
Amelia Hoggett?
Hoggett. Hoggett.
Hoggett. I still messed it up, didn't I?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Amelia Hoggett.
Thank you. Okay. Page number one.
Consideration to adopt the, the audit of, for city Brandon for FY 2024. Stop right there. We wanna take that individually.
We're, we're going to ask for the auditor.
I'm sorry.
The auditor to come forward.
Auditor, can you come forward?
So introduce yourself, please, sir. Microphone should be on.
Copies?
I saw, I'll get it.
Okay. I'm Greg Vaughn with Barlow and Company. We have the 2024 audit for you tonight. Is that better? So I'm Greg Vaughn with the Barlow and Company CPAs, and we have the 2024 audit for y'all tonight. Yeah, y'all have already had the preliminary report, uh, and this will, is the final issued report. All right, uh, start off with, we appreciate the opportunity to do the audit for y'all again this year. Yeah, I'm gonna hit some high points through here. Uh, first off, the first three pages is your independent auditor's report. Brandon did receive an unqualified audit opinion, used to call it a clean opinion, which means these financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. If you'll turn to page 13, this is your overall statement of net position. Uh, the city this year ended the year with a 162 million in gross net assets. Uh, and that is against liabilities of about 84 million on a government-wide basis. Total net position was around 71 million 300,000. Page 15 is your consolidated statement of activities. Couple of high points there, the, uh, the city had almost 11 million in sales taxes, uh, almost 9 million in property taxes. Uh, net position at the end of the year, 71, 300,000. Page 16 is the balance sheet governmental funds, shows your fund balances for your various funds. You ended up with 27 million in liabilities and fund balances for the year across all your, your governmental funds. Of that amount, uh, 5.597 was unassigned general fund balance. Page 18 shows your, uh, fund balances, net changes for the year. Uh, fund balances, it kinda alternates year to year depending on how many assets are capitalized and things. Ended up with 23 million 200,000 in the funds. Page 20 is your water, sewer, and sanitation. You had water and sewer net position of almost 27 million. Sanitation was 710,000. Page 21 is your proprietary fund, statement of revenues, expenses, and changes, and this shows what you took in for water and sanitation versus what you spent. Uh, your operating revenue and expense, the net number this year was 19,000, so it cost almost exactly what you charged to provide water, sewer, and sanitation for the city. The rest of this is various notes to the financials that goes through your operating policies, your, uh, some of your investments, capital assets, a whole lot of stuff to read there, some comparison schedules for your funds from year to year. I do wanna call your attention to page 70, page 80. This is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. This is what the city expended of federal award money this year. Um, there was, uh, several audit opinions in here on these things, all of them were unqualified, which is what you want. And you can call me with any questions you have or any concerns you ever have.
I've got a question. On the preliminary draft, um, and I can't find it in here, the amphitheater fund, could, can you point to that on the, um?
Yeah, that's on page 16.
It's on 70 on the old one.
Oh, you, you're, you're talking about the comparison schedules.
Correct.
Yeah. Page 70. 70. 68 on the final version.
So my question is, the ending balance in 23 is, is a figure. Beginning balance of 24 is a different amount. Why, why is that?
Yeah, if you'll read, it's, uh, fund balance beginning as restated. There was some items in the current year that was applicable to prior years that flowed through here. Yeah. There's a note in there on that.
Couldn't get my brain to figure out why it's something that ended on one day, then the very next day it's shooting the same, but, okay, thank you.
It's also confusing sometimes because that operates on a calendar basis. It runs January 1 through December, so you haven't closed the books on a lot of things that haven't happened by the time you get to, uh, September 30th. Still got to follow y'all through.
Any further questions? Need a motion, consideration to adopt the adult for the city of Brandon for FY 2024. I'll make the mo, I'll make the motion. All in favor say aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Please continue.
May we take two through eight?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay, three, two, three, eight.
Consider, consideration to approve professional services agreements for the purposes of promoting tourism in accordance to, with HB 1521, 2023 MS legal legislative session and other lawful and related purposes. Authorizing the mayor to execute the same and improve payment of all show-related expectations. Daffodil Torres music, LLC and the City of Brandon artist agreement, Lucas Code F slash S slash O, banned, Leonardo and City of Brandon artist agreement, Tommy Nelson and the City of Brandon reversed artist agreement. Consideration to approve the quote from Metro Building Services to replace mini-split system at the, I miss, for the amount of 11,407 and 84 cents. Another quote received from Martinis Services Incorporated in the amount of 12,698 and zero cents. Consideration to approve the quote from Wilson and Wilson Immigration to install a new immigration system and control in the front parking lot of Lot City Hall, covering the existing planting areas for, for the amount of 22,975 and zero cents. Okay. Consideration to approve the advertisement for, request for qualifications for intermediary services related to the approved FY 2023 EDA projects. The mayor has permission to design and select a committee to evaluate each proposal. Consideration to rescind, we skid the warrant issued to P E R S that was included in the April 24th claims docket and return the payments to P E R S according to the memo. Consideration to, we, we send board action on item number six. For taking April 24th, 2025, approving the brown boar bottling sponsorship, agreeing to approve revised agreements for 2025 consult season and authorize the mayor to execute the same construction to the national design, consideration of designing Charles Pickox and Colleen Demoren as authorized users as at Trustmark National Bank regarding the city of Brandon's business credit codes.
We're going to ask number nine to be taken at executive session.
Consideration to approve, A, a docket of claims for May 5th, 2025, B, Box Everest claims released on May 5th, 2025.
Round of applause.
Motion to approve all items presented by the clerk.
I make a motion. Second.
Need a second?
Need a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board.
Good evening.
Say good evening.
Good evening. May I take all my items together, please?
Yes, please.
All right. Item number one, consideration to declare an emergency, the repairs to the North Street Waterwell, approve invoice five-one-eight, three-zero-one-eight in the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars from Griner Drilling Services, an authorized payment of the same. Number two, declare an emergency, the following repairs, approve the invoices from Hemp Hill Construction Company for these emergency repairs, an authorized payment of the same. All repairs were made at the F Y twenty-five general construction commodity bid pricing. Number three, consideration to approve the invoice pursuant to the memo from Hemp Hill Construction Company for non-emergency repairs, an authorized payment of the same. All repairs are at the F Y twenty-five general construction commodity bid pricing. There were eleven of those. Number four, consideration for the following regarding utility damage reimbursement payments received from Danella Construction Company, a subcontractor for Verizon Wireless. Number one, is it to accept the following reimbursement payments from Danella for damage to city infrastructure? The first one was eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-six cents for damage to our water main that occurred on January eighth. The second one was two thousand, forty-nine dollars and sixteen cents for damage to the water main at Wickgate Drive and Willbrook Lane, excuse me, that occurred on February twenty-sixth. And the second part of that is to approve the corresponding release and settlement of claims for each reimbursement payment and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same. And number five, consideration to approve the utility adjustment approvals and denials pursuant to the memo.
A motion to approve from items with public works? Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Community Development Director is not here this evening, so Board will just, I'll take this one. We're going to set public hearing for May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five for case number twenty-five dash zero-one-one, conditional use application for Keith Humphrey at six-oh-nine Luckney Road, parcel number H nine P dash two dash thirty-one. Is there a motion to approve setting at public hearing?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Luke Hooker. Oh, not Luke Hooker, that is. All right, need a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right.
Initial came to us as the fire chief, but he sat beside me and then after we figured it out, we promote, me and the fire chief promoted him to the director of public safety. So he's going to do fire and police tonight. So go ahead and introduce yourself, sir.
Hi, my name is Christian McCray.
So we have eight items. I want to take number seven by itself, so I could take one through six and number eight together, please.
Please.
All right, so start with numbers.
Let the chief say the case.
No, you say it.
So, yeah, let me say it, which we just what it says.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Request permission to hire Lang Target as patrolman for the City of Brandon Police Department effective May twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, and set his rate of pay in accordance with Request permission to accept forfeit per property. Request permission to increase the annual salary of officer.
Marion.
Marion Berry in accordance with the memo. Requesting permission from Sergeant William Saul to travel to Fort Worth, Texas to participate in the FBI. Lead international affairs course September twenty-twenty, I mean, twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five. Request to change the numbers of hours for Officer Tan Green now that she is a school resource officer. Respectfully request permission for Brandon Police and Fire Departments to enter into a contract with the.
BFAC dot com for a suicide prevention app. And number eight is consideration to accept the resignation of Gavin Hill, dispatcher for the City of Brandon effective May seventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there, is there a motion to approve those items presented by the chief?
I make a motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I just had a question.
Second.
No, you can do it after. We can vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board.
So I had a question for chief. Which school will she be resource officer at?
At the high school.
Number seven?
All right, number seven is consideration of the application for a pit bull breed variance by Nicole Hinckley at two-one-nine East Town Drive.
Thank you, chief. Presently before the board is an application for a pit bull breed variance that was filed by Mr. Nicole Hinckley at, find my file, find my book. At two-nineteen East Town, is that correct, chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't really know any way to do this other than we know we have interested parties who'd like to come forward and speak. And so what I'd like to do is, is did you have an occasion to inspect the property?
I did.
Okay. And make sure you speak up loud enough so we can, we can all hear. Chief, there are certain requirements under the ordinance, are there not, with regard to the improvements in the, in considering a variance application with regard to the improvements in the yard, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, trying to. All right, chief, did you have an occasion to go make an inspection of the property with permission of the owner?
I did.
Okay, what did you find?
I found that a fence has been constructed in the backyard, but there's two vulnerable spots in the fence because it looks like water drain off areas that are coming up underneath the fence. And there are open areas where a dog unsupervised could easily dig out from up underneath the fence. And I also found that there was no enclosure with the concreted, enclosure with concrete floor in the hundred-square-foot enclosure that's required by the ordinance itself.
Did you prepare a memo with regard to that?
I did.
Are you asking that the memo and the photographs be incorporated into the action of the board with consideration of the application?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you have an occasion to speak with anybody with regard to the proposed application?
I did. I spoke with Mr. Michael Pierce, who lives at two-twenty-three East Town Drive, and he shared his, he said pretty much he didn't have any concerns regarding Ms. Hinckley's dogs. He was a dog owner himself. He said the dogs don't bark. He doesn't have any concerns with them. But also spoke with Ms. Jeanette Brewer at two-oh-two East Town Drive, and she did have concerns there. She's concerned along with her neighbor, Patsy Robinson, who I've also spoke with previously, that the dogs are going to get away from Ms. Hinckley while she's walking them and attack somebody that may be working in their yard. Some of the other things were that Ms. Hinckley is walking her dog in Shallow Park, and we do have signs out there that prohibit that, which we'll be doing a little bit more enforcement work with as far as PD side to make sure people aren't walking their dogs in Shallow Park.
Okay, did you have an occasion to have a conversation with Ms. Hinckley about that particular issue?
I have not. She's been out of town. I spoke with her. We corresponded through email last week, and I'm waiting for her to get back in town so I can correspond with her.
Awesome. Thank you, chief. Do you have anything else to add at this time? I know there's more to be, to be done, but do you have anything at this time to add?
Uh, no, sir. I believe that some people from the neighborhood did come up here wanting to speak about it.
Is the applicant here tonight? Is Ms. Hinckley here?
Yes, sir, I am here.
Okay, Ms. Hinckley, if you'll come forward, please. Ms. Hinckley, this is an opportunity for you to advise the board with what you'd like to advise with regard to the application. There may be some matters that the board will discuss with you later in executive session if they, if they're so inclined, but you can present whatever you'd like to at this time.
Yes, so I, so I purchased this home on June twelfth of last year. I've had the required insurance for the dogs in place since the home was purchased. I moved in on June fifteenth of twenty-twenty-four. I've owned both dogs and been a responsible dog owner since that time. On March third of this year, I was contacted by the City of Brandon Animal Control Officer letting me know that someone in the neighborhood had complained about my dogs and that there were certain, there were certain rules and regulations that I needed to comply with to get a variance to keep the animals. I've already provided documentation of the insurance along with a letter from my insurance agent letting you know that he is aware of the dogs on my property. I have the required insurance, and there have been no dog bite claims. Number one. So number two was to fence in the yard. I have done that. I completed the fence in my yard on April nineteenth, and as you've inspected it, was not aware about the little crevices, so I will get those taken care of. And I'm seeking a variance to the variance because I don't want to build and I don't see a need to build an outdoor kennel for dogs that are kept indoors. They have always been indoor, indoor dogs, and as we can discuss during executive session, they are emotional support animals. So they are therapeutic animals, which if housed outdoors in an outdoor kennel in my backyard, will not provide the therapeutic support that they are intended to. So I've spoken with the, with the animal control officer, and I've since learned that walking a dog of any breed on a leash is permitted, and so I will do that. I was not aware about the park situation. I've seen many dog owners walking, so you'll have quite the field day enforcing that, getting people. But, so I, what I'm seeking today merely is, I, I understand there are people in my neighborhood that are concerned about the dogs. So as soon as this issue was brought to my attention, I have done everything possible to be a responsible and good neighbor to everybody. I immediately reached out to my HOA president to advise what the situation was. And we, he put together a communication which was sent out to all neighbors on March eighteenth. I am in compliance with our, so there are twenty-two houses in our development. I am in compliance with all of the HOA, with all the HOA rules and regulations. At that time, I also opened it up for any neighbors that had any concerns to please contact me as I'm willing to change the times that I take my dogs for a walk or hear their concerns of what, what would be bothering them. I had only heard from neighbors that voiced their support for me, and so I've always been responsible. I look before I take my dogs out for a walk. I have two of them. I walk them one at a time so as not to provide any fear for my neighbors. I generally take them out of the neighborhood because I do know that there are several neighbors that have little dogs, and they walk their dogs within the confines of our circular neighborhood. And so I walk them out of the neighborhood so as not to cause issues. And I haven't had any concerns with the dog owners in my neighborhood. So that was option one, is to reach out on March eighteenth. I didn't receive any feedback. And so I've continued working with the city, with, with Mr. Baker, and making sure that I comply because I want to keep these animals. They are very near and dear to me and also emotional support animals. And so when Mr. Baker gave me the opportunity to come speak before y'all, I gladly cut my trip short, came back early because I, I don't want this hanging over my head. And so I'm here today, so I did not have to do this, but I did send an email to everybody in my neighborhood, letting them know that there is a meeting tonight. If you would like to come and speak publicly about your concerns, about your support, whatever it may be, please do so. I am not going, I'm not going to hide it and try to get it passed without opening it up to the neighborhood. I have continuously tried to be a good neighbor. In fact, I saw four women this morning who I know have issues with the dogs, and so I wanted to go speak to them. Again, trying to be a good neighbor, you don't need to have this be an issue. I went in, I spoke to them. So apparently, while I've been out of town, there's a petition going around. I kindly asked, may I see the petition? Jeanette Brewer said, no, ma'am. And I said, but why can't I see it? Well, if you're going to sign it, I'll give it to you. Okay, sure. I'm not going to sign anything I have not read. So I haven't even seen this petition. So I continue to ask them, so what are the concerns you have with the dogs? I'm not trying to divide the neighborhood. And so I'm here today is to, to ask for the variance to the variance of being able to keep my emotional support animals. I have a fenced yard. I have the required insurance. I will look at the memo that you've put together and address those concerns. So I'd like to move forward and keep my animals without the requirement of the outdoor enclosure.
Ms. Hinckley, there may be some questions after they hear, the board hears from, from other people. I just had a couple. When did you, when did you get the dogs?
So I've owned one dog since twenty-sixteen and the other dog since twenty-twenty-four.
Which, one is Ghost?
Ghost is a pit bull lab mix. He's.
Is that the twenty-sixteen, well, ten, yeah.
Twenty-sixteen, yes, he's the elderly.
Got it. Oh, and are you asking that your application and the documents that you submitted, the insurance information, photographs be appended to the minutes?
If it needs to be.
It's your call.
If you can make the decision without doing, without, I just, it doesn't.
Okay, do you have anything else that you'd like to present at this time? I mean, except for maybe some further discussion in executive session? Do you have anything else?
Yeah, no, no, I don't.
All right, we're going to hear from some other people, and I'm sure they'll get back to you.
All right, thank you.
Although this is not a formal, formal public hearing, but because the variance process doesn't require that, I think the board would like to hear from, we'll treat it like a public hearing, maybe. And so if there's anyone else here who desire, is there anyone here who desires to speak, speak in favor of or not in opposition to the application for variance? I see a hand. If you want to come forward and speak, come forward, state your name, say what you've got to say, and then we'll kind of work through it that way. Will that work?
Good evening. My name is Edward McNulty, and I am a neighbor in the East Town community.
What's your address, Mr. McNulty?
Two-thirteen. I'm three doors away from Ms. Hinckley's house. I was completely unaware that Ms. Hinckley even had dogs up until recently. In other words, she moved in last June, and I have not even, didn't even know that she had dogs until she started walking them this spring when the weather turned warm. And as far as I can see, I know I've not had any problem with the dogs. I'm not aware of any incidents with the dogs. I have, in fact, I have been just this afternoon within a foot of the dog. within a foot of the dog. The dog did not bark, did not open its mouth to show its teeth or anything like that. In fact, he was completely indifferent to me. Ms. Hinckley has him under complete control, it seems to me. My wife and I recently went into Ms. Hinckley's house. Now, she had put the dogs up in their room. They've got their own room in the house. And you might imagine that dogs would start barking and carrying on. These dogs, I heard single barks, and I heard whining as if to say, "Mommy, there are strange people in the house. Can we come see?" And I've had big dogs, and that's exactly what they do if you put them up. They will whine, and they'll maybe make a single bark. So I didn't hear any raucous barking or anything like that, like they were in an uproar. It would just maybe single barks, and then they'd whine, you know, just like, "Can we come see?" So I've not had any problem with these dogs and don't understand why there is a complaint. I've not heard that there was any incident that caused the complaint. So I'm concerned as to why, you know, this is all going on. Now, another point, I think-- and I've read the rules, the regulations, and I understand that one of the things is that you have to have an outdoor enclosure for the dogs. I don't think that's going to work. And the reason I say that is they are used to being inside with her. If you put them outside, they will really become a nuisance to the neighborhood because they will be constant barking and carrying on. They want inside with their mommy, so to speak. And so I would say, as far as I'm concerned, I'm perfectly happy to have those dogs in the neighborhood with Ms. Hinckley in charge of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who desires to speak with regard to no objection to the application or in favor of it either? I'm going to just try to divide it up so I can keep it clean.
Okay, I'll be really, really brief. Monica Baldwin, I live at 164 Woodgate Drive, so I'm not in that subdivision. But I'm just speaking as a former pit bull owner. And I fought this ordinance about 15 years ago when it was enacted. And my husband and I were in compliance with everything except the concrete slab. And our dogs are now deceased. But I know that the pit bulls has a bad rap, and it's only because of how they're raised. And hers are-- they're not service dogs, but they're emotional support dogs. And I just want to be here to encourage her, to encourage you to allow her the-- what do you call it? The conditional ordinance or whatever it is. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, please come forward.
My name is Mike Boyd. I too live in East Town at 215 East Town Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Two or three points I wanted to make. I too tried to get a copy of the petition, and I was denied that today. I just wanted to see who had signed it. So, you know, that's where we stand with that. I've been told by a couple of people who did sign the petition that they felt pressured to do so. I just feel like there's misinformation out there about this breed of dog. And by the way, you folks have probably done your homework, but there's really no such thing as a pit bull. It's not a recognized breed. That breed is a terrier that was originally trained for fighting purposes 20, 30, 40 years ago, whatever. As far as the issue about dogs not being allowed to walk in Shiloh Park-- my wife walks down there every day, and she says it's overrun with dogs. So just for whatever that's-- for whatever that is. Again, the terriers are originally bred for fighting, but usually are incredibly loving, loyal, and gentle toward family members. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else here who desires to speak in favor of the variance application? Is there anyone here who desires to speak in opposition to the variance application? Would come forward and speak, state your name.
My name is Joan Boyd. I live at 215 East Town Drive. I had no intentions of coming up here and talking. I'm very disappointed in the fact that a petition goes around our neighborhood. I believe by people that don't know the facts and the truth about these dogs. I worked for a veterinary lab for years. I've been around these dogs. Yes, they can fight. Yes, they can bite. Yes, they can probably, you know, cause damage. We've all seen that in our reports. These dogs are not going to do that. I believe, my opinion. They're loving dogs. Nicole couldn't be a nicer, more responsible neighbor. She's been quiet. I think most of us in this neighborhood have not even taken the time to get to know this owner and how responsible she is for the dogs that she's got. I'm sorry my voice is quivering, but I'm just not used to talking like this. It's a shame the rap that these dogs get. Not just hers, but, you know. So I'm just-- I'm totally in support. I have no problem with these dogs being in our neighborhood. I would suggest that if some of our neighbors have trouble with it, talk to some veterinarians. That's what I do. They treat pit bulls every day, every day. There's pit bulls all over Brandon. So are we gonna-- you know, what are we going to do about that? These dogs are fine. Can I give you 100% guarantee? No. But I'm just as sure as I can be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone else here who desires to make any comments with regard in favor of the application? Is there anyone here who desires to speak in opposition to the application? If so, come forward, state your name.
My name's Bill Smith. I live at 239 East Town Drive. And I am the one that called the police on March 3 out of personal concern because we had a five-year-old grandchild that was coming from Washington State that loves to play outside in the common area. And as we've stated before, East Town is a circular drive made up of 22 homes with the common area. There's a green area. It's got a gazebo in the middle. It's a nice place to let children play. We did not know there were pit bulls in the neighborhood until February, when we saw Nicole walking them. And my wife had been the president of the Homeowners Association for a couple of years during the COVID period. So some of the neighbors came to her and said, "Hey, there's some pit bulls in the neighborhood." And we said, "Well, who? Who's got pit bulls? We don't know anything about that." And I looked up the ordinance, and sure enough, there's an ironclad prohibition of pit bull ownership in not just Brandon, but Rankin County's got it. And the variance is very difficult. It's clear the intent of this ordinance was to prohibit ownership of pit bulls. And even though there's not a specific breed of pit bull, when the ordinance was written, they put all kind of inclusive language to say, "Any kind of dog that's close to a pit bull." So, I mean, this ordinance was intentionally put on the books to protect the citizens of Brandon and the citizens of Rankin County when the county did it. The statistics showing pit bulls, documenting pit bulls attacking children and elderly are staggering. To say that they're sweet and kind dogs-- they may be at this moment, but these were rescue dogs, according to Nicole's own message she sent out. So we don't know how these dogs were raised. They may be in a nurturing environment right now, but who's to say what kind of environment they grew up in before they were rescued? We're talking about pets attacking owners, too, not just these fighting dogs. This is not about biting dogs, biting people. This is about-- there are so many statistics about pets turning on their owners, turning on children, turning on elderly, leaving their owner's property to do the bite. According-- there's a public education website called dogsbite.org. It compiles third-party research, third-party results from dog bites all over the country. Every year, from 2005 to the present, at least 66% of all dog bite fatalities came from pit bulls. Not to mention just the bites themselves and the injuries. 2019 article published by the National Center for Biotechnology Information, which is part of the National Institute for Health, shows-- it shows that pit bull bites dominated the number of dog bites and not only dog bites, but the number of severely damaging dog bites. And who were the most common victims? The elderly? Practically everyone in East Town is retired and small children. Who comes to see elderly people? Grandchildren. The attacks were most often unprovoked, and dogs-- like I said, the dogs went off of the owner's property to do the attack. Now, have we had an incident here in East Town yet? No. 65%-- another statistic-- I don't want to bore you with too many statistics, but I want to throw a few out there. There was a regional one trauma-level research done. 65% of the time, the pit bull attacks, it's going to be to the face, the head, or neck area, often causing the need for extensive reconstructive surgery. So this $100,000 liability insurance isn't going to touch the damage, the medical bills, medical expenses for damage caused by one of these dogs, should it go rogue, should it attack someone. Unfortunately, the statistics do not lie. The pit bull is by far-- it exceeds every other dog breed combined for the number of bites and the severity of bites and the number of deaths caused. There are at least 18 countries in the last 10 years that have passed national-level laws restricting dog breed ownership. And these are countries we've all heard of, the UK, Ireland, Spain, a couple of provinces in Canada. They're all cracking down on pit bull ownership. Why? They're dangerous. They can be dangerous. When they become dangerous, they are very dangerous and likely deadly, likely causing extensive damage if not death. So it's been explained-- we-- I contacted the police to keep this from becoming an emotional, polarizing event in the neighborhood. I thought, there's an ordinance on the book. We'll let the police handle this. After we've spoken, they've come and checked. We were recommended by our alderman to circulate this petition. There was nothing secret about it. There was nothing hidden about it. We found out about this Thursday last week that we need to get the petition done. So we took the initiative, passed it around. The people that signed the petition against-- that are against this variance are strongly against it. The people that-- most of the people that didn't sign it said, "Ah, not really happy about this, but I don't want to get involved. I don't want to commit my name to that." So the vast majority of the people in the neighborhood are not in favor of these dogs. So the emotional support aspect to this, I get it. I like dogs. Dogs are sweet. What about the emotional distress that's causing the other 21 houses of residents in this neighborhood? I don't think it's fair to do that because this is stressing out some folks in this neighborhood unnecessarily. So granting a nuisance to this-- I mean, granting a variance to this will create a nuisance. It will negatively affect the majority of homeowners in the neighborhood, and I believe it will set a dangerous precedent for other neighborhoods in Brandon. It's a shame that the ordinance wasn't written with language prohibiting walking the dog. I don't understand how you can prohibit a dog ownership in the city but then say it's okay to walk one. I don't understand that. I think that was just a flub when the thing was drafted. So I'd like to thank you for your support. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming out, Mark Baker for coming out, Chief French. You've all shown great concern. I appreciate it. We humbly ask that you deny this variance, and that's where we stand. So, thank you.
Hold on, hold on. We'll give you a chance to speak. Hold on, Mr. Smith. Do you have the petition? And do you want to make it part of the minutes? Give it to the city clerk, that's fine. We just want to-- I didn't know if you had it. Okay. Yes, sir, thank you. I just wanted-- if you had it, I figured you wanted to make it part of the minutes. No, no, sir. I'm going to keep going this way, and then we can come back to you. But I want-- there are other people here that want to speak, may want to speak. I don't know. I'm assuming that. They might not be. And let them have their opportunity, and then you'll have another opportunity, I'm sure. Is there anyone else here who desires to make public comment with regard in opposition? Come forward, please.
We have always--
Did you just give me your name?
My name is Jeanette Brewer. I live in 202 East Town Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer.
We've always heard the phrase, We've always heard the phrase, "If you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything." I stand for the law tonight. I stand that Brandon, the city of Brandon, has this law against the ownership of any dangerous dogs to protect its citizens. And being a widow and also a senior citizen, I enjoy gardening, I'm in the garden club, that is my therapy when it comes to being outside physically as well as mentally. The majority of the time that I'm at home, I'm outside, if I'm not asleep. So therefore, I'm very, I did not see these, any of these animals until late February, and when I did, I was so alarmed. But anyway, I think it's very important, you know, that, that we all do what we very can, what we can to protect everybody, you know, because whatever you decide to do tonight, it's going to affect the citizens. You know, if you allow one variant, it's just opening up a can of worms, you know, that you're going to have to continue to do. I'm very emotional about this, like I said. I went to, you know, I had to go to my doctor today for a checkup, and I had, actually, they checked my blood pressure three or four times. And as far as this petition today, when several people had called or texted me, one man was saying, "Your petition," like I was the only one that had signed this, and you know, and the way I've been treated, you know, I consider that harassment, you know, that's not fair to me, because I am a widow. And you know, for, you know, some of these people to do that, you know, and then other people we've talked with today, they have called and asked, "Did you put, you know, I know you put your name on that," or, "You need to take your name off that petition." So I consider that harassment too. So you know, I hate it's come to this, but I'm very upset about it, and I hope that, and pray that you make the right decision that's going to affect all of our citizens, not just the people in East Town. Thank you.
I'm just going to ask, in all the statistics the gentleman had, did he make notice of any, how many animals were on leashes when they attacked somebody? If an animal is under control, and these animals have been under control, very good control, I don't think you're going to find a lot of statistics that result in some kind of attack like that, that he was discussing in his statistics. I think we need to take that into account. The animals are on a leash, they're a single animal, not two of them at a time, they're very well controlled, they're very well tempered to me. So I just thought I'd bring that up. That needs to be included in there. Was the, were the animals on a leash?
And most importantly, they're inside dogs, they are inside dogs. I mean, she lets them out to her body.
Find you, this is not going to become a point, counterpoint, this is here for you to come, and I'm not saying that to you, ma'am, because you haven't spoken yet, but I just want to make sure, say what you want to say, the board, if the board has questions, the board will make inquiry of any member of the audience, but you don't need to do that. Go ahead, yes, ma'am.
My name is Linda Bro, I live at 235 East Town. I do not live on the side where the dogs are, I live on the opposite side. But I do know that I am very disappointed in our board for our homeowners association because the president, vice president, all of them did not even notify us that these dogs were even in the neighborhood. We just got a letter out about a month ago that they were here. I have nothing against the dogs, I don't have, I don't want to take anybody's pet or anything like that, I just want them to be, to follow the rules and the law of Brandon and Rankin County. I just want them to be taken care of, so that they do not get out with someone else. And we all, as we are older, we walk the neighborhood, I walk, I walk around at the park too. But I think that we have some elderly that are walking with walkers, with the walking sticks. We've had people that are, you know, much older, that if a dog came up to them, one of these dogs, and would even scare them, it would cause them to fall and break a hip, you know? You never know when a big dog comes up to you, whether they're going to attack you or whether, what they're going to do. But I just think, we just need to follow the law, is what I'm concerned about, you know, more than anything. Yes, I did sign the petition, and the petition did not say anything about taking our dogs away, it was just to follow the variance. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. All right, Ms. Hinckley, do you want to close it up for us?
Yes, I would, please. So I'd like to show you, just for your benefit, this is a map of our neighborhood, so I don't know if you want to pass it around. My home is highlighted in orange, and everyone highlighted in green has voiced their support for me. So as you'll see looking at that map, the people that have the concerns are nobody that live nearby me, the concern has always been me walking the dogs. This is the first I've heard Linda speak about the, you know, just please follow the variance. My concern, or my request to the board is, these dogs are never going to be kept outside. If you require me to build an outdoor kennel, it is basically for naught, because these animals, like I said, will never be kept in that kennel. I understand this variance has been on the books for 15 years, and folks have complied. I have heard anecdotally for the folks that have complied with the variance, that they built the outdoor kennel because they were scared and they didn't want to lose their dogs. But at no point did they ever keep their dogs in the kennel. In fact, their children played in the kennel more than the dogs ever did. And so to me, it seems like a waste of resources, a waste of time, and it's a monstrosity in my backyard. I would vouch to say any homeowner, I understand we're elderly in the neighborhood, but if you were to go sell your home and you see a neighbor that has basically tiger cages built in their backyard, I would think that would be more of a concern for the neighborhood than actually animals that are kept indoors walked on leashes. And so, thank you very much. Yes, you can go ahead and do that. I would, there were a couple things on there, if you can retract. Oh, sure. Yeah, I just don't want to be disrespectful, so.
No, I have a question on this petition. Okay.
Hi, I'm Lori Morris, and I live at 193 Kennedy Farm Parkway, which is by the Shallow Park. I do not live in their subdivision. I am here to speak to the fact that my dogs, when I lived in Rankin County, were attacked by a pit bull who did not stay outside, actually lived inside, and he tore the hind off the back of my dog, two dogs, on my property. One spent four nights at the Mississippi State Animal Hospital on Treetop, and a $2,600 vet bill, that, let alone the one that I originally took him to, which was Cross Gates Veterinary, and I had to pay that $900 bill. So I'm telling you, you might not keep your dog outside, you might keep your dog inside, that dog might love being next to you and friendly. That dog never tried to attack me, but he did attack my dogs. I had two of them, one was, had to be put down, the other one, because he tore the back off of his skin, because they do not let go. Once they bite, they just continuously pull. So I'm just letting you know, whether they're outside or inside, they're dangerous dogs.
There is another hand? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, I see. I'm sorry, I didn't, should have-
I'm sorry, is this you?
No, this lady right here would like to come speak.
I'm Patsy Robinson-Smith, I live at 239 East Town. I had a doctor's appointment today, and as Jeanette, blood pressure's up, I saw Dr. Mark Cosco at the JEA, and as the gentleman that takes you back and gets your info and types it in and all, we were talking, and I just, he said, "What are you rattled about?" And I said, "Well, we've got a meeting tonight, we've got two pit bulls." And as soon as I said "pit bull," they whizzed around in that little chair and said, "Last year, a lady in my neighborhood was mauled by one." I said, "Where do you live?" "It's in Madison." So this is, I mean, the dogs can be vicious. Maybe all of them aren't, but they can turn, any dog. A lady in my church, I can give the name to you confidentially. Last year probably, her own dog turned on her that was in her home and gnawed her arm all the way up. Just, it is pathetic looking now. And we just hope and pray that you all honor the ordinance that the city has set, and I thank you. One other thing I'm concerned about, after speaking with my insurance agent and a couple of other agents, she has $100,000 worth of insurance. Their suggestion, with the type dog, animal that that is, that she have a million dollar policy on herself and those two dogs, and that would not even take care of if something happened and somebody was mauled. But that is just what they suggested. Thank you.
Mayor? There's a lot of emotion in this room tonight, and a lot of times, it's not good to make a decision with all the emotion. We found out tonight there may be some holes in our existing ordinance as far as walking the dogs, and we may have a walking the dog problem in Shallow Park. So based on that, I think that we need a little time to review that ordinance compared to what other cities might have close by us, and just really review this, and I move that we take this under advisement.
Well, take it under advisement, we're going to pull it from the agenda. Would you like to revisit?
We can table it for now, and that's what we need to do, in my mind. I would move that.
Okay, questions? Chris, go ahead, you got a question?
What is the legal difference between a service dog and an emotional support dog?
Well-
And I say emotional support dog, my understanding is it can be anything you want it to be.
Well, I'd rather get into that in a, maybe in an executive session.
That's some of the things I think we need to find out about.
Well, that requires me to give you some legal analysis, and I'd rather do that in an executive session. Okay? Thank you. Okay, all right. Board, agreeable? Removing this from the agenda for tonight, picking it up at our next board meeting?
They've got to come back two weeks from now.
They're ready to go.
All right. Mr. Baker, I'll defer to you, should it be a public hearing action? We're not going to pick any, we'll move it from the agenda for future consideration. All right, okay.
I need to be clear, there was a bunch of things I opened up there, they were expected. Do you want to draw that?
I will draw it.
All right. No action on this issue tonight, all right? So, Chief, back to you.
You ready to call his out now? Good job, boy. Thank you.
Chief, you have an officer we need to swear in at the end of this?
Yes.
And he's standing, he's holding that wall up back there? Okay. All right.
He might change his mind.
Okay, so you're done, all right, we'll shift over here.
You have a control officer.
Hey, buddy, you want to read them, you want me to read them? You want to read, you want me to read?
I'm going to read them.
You want to read all these? Okay, you can read, number 1, 2, 5 is mine right there. So you can start right there, we're going to wait and ask, maybe we can take them all together.
Chief, you ready?
Yes, sir, I am. Yes, just start with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. May we take all these together?
Yes, please.
All right, all you, buddy. You got it.
All right. Consideration to remove off the roster and payroll, part-time firefighter slash paramedic, Jeremy King, effective May 5, 2025, request considered to travel to-
Tishomingo.
To Tishomingo, State Park, Mississippi, to participate in Mississippi Fire Academy Advanced Rope Rescue Workshop. We're doing this 100th training class from September 28, 2025, to October 1, 2025, for Battalion Chief-
Chief.
Chief.
Head cock.
Head cock. And back, consideration to approve the purchase of uniform pants from the Southern Connection as the lowest and best quote and authorized payment of the same. Consideration approving travel to Vicksburg, Mississippi for the annual firefighters and fire chiefs summer conference, May 28, June 1, 2025, for Battalion Chief Eric Stringer. Consideration to approve Chief Roberts and Caroline Palmer to travel to Biloxi, Mississippi, to attend the Emergency Service Administration Professional Association Conference, September 2nd, September through September 5, 2025, and approve all travel expenses.
Good job.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve it from the fire department? I make a motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, like sign.
All right, audience, going to entertain a motion to determine necessity of being in executive session. We'll go ahead and vote this, and we'll swear in this new police officer and move into that. So a motion to go into executive session? Consider the need to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. If you would, come down front, come on, mayor, you're coming with me.
Go swear in a new police officer.
State your name. I swear, I support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Mississippi, and the laws thereof. And I am not unfollowed by the performance of duties of a police officer in Brandon, Mississippi. And I will perform my duties to the best of my ability.
Here.
... Until... What is it for, uh, for nineteenth? Nineteenth and, uh, go from there. All right. All in favor say aye. Thank you for your patience tonight, board. Yeah, yeah.